We call this meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on September 23, 2025 at 5:30. Please join our board team as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the Nelson County schools, we unite students and staff with people, place, and purpose to thrive and work in life. Tonight, our meeting goals and agenda are to learn more about middle school STEM programs, discuss Thrive Employee Engagement data, and evaluate next steps for facility planning. And Mr. Shawn Smith is going to introduce us to the Fusion STEM Lab and give us a little rundown.
All right. Well, thank you all for being out here at OKH today. So we have a lot of exciting programs here at OKH. We're going to highlight one today, and that is the College and Career Launch Lab or STEM Lab. It's through the doors that you all came through. Before we take a, we're going to travel over there here in a little bit and hear from a leader over there and some students. Do you want to celebrate Laura Arnold for her kind of integral piece to get that lab off the ground last year and moving into this year? It is certainly a piece that we can give to our students to explore various college and career experiences, and it's so important at middle school level when they have that exploratory process. So thank you for giving us the opportunity. Just some highlights on this. We have 120 kids currently engaged in that College and Career Launch Lab, STEM Lab right now in this semester. If you see the number below that, we'll have 106 the second semester. And that's because students switch electives in the second semester. So, you know, you can do your math there, but we're going to have, you know, 226 kids have that experience this year, which is awesome. Out of that, some highlights there is, all the students in there will have at least, at least, if not many, many experiences going to, we have around 32, 33 different modules that they can explore. They won't get to them all, but will definitely engage in at least one very thoroughly. Some highlights for that, and Ms. Dursch will talk about this a little bit, a big piece to all of those modules that you may see there. The big attraction is students are in there. They get hands-on. You'll see like small engine, you know, where they're picking up these really important career-centered skills. But before they get to do all that, they really have to engage in a lot of deep literacy work as well before they can just dive into the modules. So I really like that balance. I think it's a good example of, you know, what we're trying to do, prepare our kids with those foundational pieces like literacy and then a really important skill set that they can use going into high school and beyond. So I think that's really cool to highlight there. I do want to shout out Ms. Dursch. She's back here. You'll hear from her in a minute when we go to the STEM Lab. She came in over the summer after she got the job, and she worked tirelessly to get that set up so the students could have this unique experience. There's about 1,000 parts and pieces in these various modules. They gotta be labeled and put where they're supposed to be, and we have to have procedures for kids to get the stuff out and put it back and take care of that lab. And that's not to even mention the curriculum that goes into knowing how all the various modules work and being able to teach the kids on them. So she has worked, you know, overtime doing those things. I do applaud her for all her work. So those are some highlights here. We are going to transition into the STEM Lab, and you'll hear from Ms. Dursch and the guests.
So we're going to have the board transition first, and they can kind of get acquainted with the students and everybody else can we can follow in.
Sounds great.
Check one, two. Check one, two, three.
Check one, two. Check one, two, three.
Thank you all for checking out the College and Career Launch Lab and just giving some, you know, big shout-outs to our students, Nova and G in there. They did an awesome job speaking about their experience, and they are definitely leaders here at OKH. A couple of things I want to hit on that ties in some of the conversation we've had tonight, just some data points, highlighting some other programs, but also the STEM Lab. We have about 72% of all the kids here are engaged in some kind of early college and career exploratory courses. So these could be elective courses like agriculture. We have two amazing business teachers where we offer everything from, I think is a really important course, but financial literacy. And we have students that go off-campus, like Ms. Dursch just talked about, the Ascend, the Airport. We have students down here, if you look at these data sets, percentage of eighth-grade students engage in high-school-level courses. So we have Algebra I that we offer here. We have two different math leaders that teach that, Ms. Landers and Mr. Edlin, Coach Edlin. He's actually coaching right now in the gym. So they teach Algebra I, and if students receive a C or better in that course, that is going to go on their high-school transcript. And then we have lots of eighth-grade students engaged in that pre-ignite where they are going to both Nelson County and Thomas Nelson. That pre-ignite pathway gives them obviously high-school credits, but that's really setting them up for success moving into trying to get their associate's degree too. So they're starting pretty early in eighth grade. And what Ms. Dursch was talking about earlier in there, we'd like to invite you all for the ribbon-cubbing, cutting of the Launch Lab on Thursday, starting at 1 o'clock. You'll see the students dive way more deep into the modules that they're in at that time, and it's just a good time to connect and celebrate the work that's been done here at OKH. So I think that's about all I have for this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Shawn.
Thank you. And thank the students. They did a fantastic job explaining the program and Ms. Dursch. It's an exciting program. It's going to grow, definitely. So with that, we're going to move on to guest comments. Thank you for attending the, our board meeting. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Guest comments are limited to three minutes for individuals and groups. Please step forward, state your name, address, and in present, a group state the name of the group you are representing. Did you have more people than that's on that list?
Yeah.
So we're going to start with the first person on our digital list, which is Sierra Hamm. You can go ahead and come forward, and you can speak at the microphone.
Hello, everyone. Thanks so much for letting me speak this evening. Again, my name is Sierra Hamm. I am here as a mother of four. Three children go to BES. I'm also a nurse and a member of the World Council for Health Searing Committee for the United States of America. I'm here to notify the board and its members that the actions may constitute a violation of the rights of the students of Nelson County Public Schools, and they may be liable for actively promoting a mass vaccination clinic for students and staff with the lack of informed consent or ability to properly refuse participation. I respect and appreciate the intent to protect the health of the students, but I strongly urge you to cancel this max vaccination campaign immediately. Specifically, the electronic-informed consent disclosures were not functioning, meaning that families were unable to access critical information regarding the potential risks and benefits and contraindications to vaccines, like being allergic to eggs, being recently sick, or having an immunocompromised family member at home. They also weren't told about the right to refuse this medication without penalty. There's six-sided different federal and international treaties mentioned in this letter that go to informed consent as a, as a law. The product insert for the flu mist, which is a live virus vaccine, has well-documented viral shedding of live viruses that the insert says are capable of producing infection for up to three to four weeks after administration. That means there's no way for people to actually opt out of this vaccine campaign. That means there's no way for people to actually opt out of this vaccine campaign. Teachers and staff can become sick from this as well as students, and there's already plenty of staff shortages. Furthermore, the flu vaccine is not a required vaccination. So it's likely to contribute problems without having a big benefit. There's been multiple years that influenza vaccines have been shown to increase your likelihood of actually getting the flu, from the Cleveland Clinic, most recently from last year. So there's a loss of instructional time concern. There's HIPAA concerns, how are we going to protect people's children who's either did or didn't receive the vaccine? It's a privacy issue. There's been a child in a state in the United States who killed themselves over being bullied about their vaccine status. The physicians to children who is administering this vaccine campaign is a research outfit that was paid over $14 million to do research on the children of Nelson County for pharmaceutical companies.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Your time is up. We really do appreciate it.
May I make one last closing statement, please? Even though vaccine manufacturers and the administrators of those vaccines cannot be held liable for the death and harm done because of those injections, the school board can be held liable for that, and that has been set as a precedent by the Supreme Court.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm.
Thank you. And how can I get you guys copies of everything that I referenced, like the insert of the flu mist and?
They can be emailed. Our, all of our email addresses are on our website.
Okay, I did print them out.
If you hand them to me, I can make a copy and scan it.
Get them to you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Rosanna Ponturo. Probably I said that correctly.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. This has to be pretty low for me. My name is Rosanna Ponturo. I happen to be a retired teacher. I taught for 38 years. I'm familiar with the history of vaccines and children. And what I know to be true is that these vaccines today are not about your health, they're not about my health, they're not about our children's health. They're about something else totally. And I know that because God has blessed me with experiences in my life where I have experienced that these vaccines are not about our health, not at all. I happen to have a girlfriend who is dating a pharmacist. Casual conversation, he says to me, you know, the flu vaccine this year is made from last year's vaccine, and that vaccine mutates every year. Okay? It's not about our health. In the vaccines, for many years, and they may still be in there, they put thermosol, then marisol, which is a mercury that goes in the vaccines. It's a preservative for a multi-dose vial. For many years, the government told us, oh, it's fine, it's fine. They finally eliminated it in 1999 because there were so many protests over it. It's not about our health. I'll give you one last one, because I know you're probably short on time. I had two dogs in my home, both were rescues. One was afraid to get back in the car after she was rescued, so I had the vet come to my house. I said, my dogs do not need the Boratela shot, which is the kennel cough shot you may be familiar with. They don't need it. They came from, they came from rescues, they came from kennels. He told me in my home that he could not separate the vaccines, that they were all together in one vial, so I had to give my dog all three. So what am I going to do? Give the dog all three because they have to have the leptospirosis and whatever the other one was? He leaves. I walk into my kitchen, and what is sitting in my sink? The reseparate vials for three separate vaccines that he told me he could not separate and that he injected my dogs with. It's not about our health, your health, my health, or our children's health. It's about something else altogether. The scientific research you can find everywhere, the money trail you can find everywhere, and I would urge you, for your children's sake and for the future of all our children, that you do look into it. Please have the eyes to see and the ears to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Amy Durbin.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to take a moment to reflect on the steps that have been brought to us, that have been brought to us at this point, and all who have contributed to moving our district forward. Over the last six months, the local planning committing, committee worked with dedication to study our needs and recommended a path for the future. That process was further strengthened by the community survey, where parents, staff, and neighbors spoke overwhelmingly in support of positive change and equity for all students. I want to commend this board for the courage you have shown in moving forward with these recommendations. It is not always easy to make the decisions that bring change, but your willingness to do so reflects a true commitment to the students you serve. Our community has spoken clearly, and our children cannot wait. With your continued leadership, we can build on this momentum and ensure brighter opportunities for every student in our district. And then, on another note, our PBE site visits are in full swing. So if any of you all would like to join us, we're all out and about pretty much just throughout the week now. Mr. Bradley's joined in on several of our visits, Ms. Arnold's joining in, our principals are joining in. So it's really something to see and witness. It's very powerful. So just like to invite you all to join us anytime you'd like. Reach out and we'll, we'll make, set up a time.
Definitely. Put me down.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Erin Barnes.
I'm here tonight on behalf of several of our community members, staff, and parents of the New Haven School. We just want to extend our sincere appreciation to the board for your thoughtful leadership and commitment to our schools. We want to thank you for honoring the recommendations of the LPC and for listening to the voices reflected in the community surveys. Your decision to move forward with the remodel at New Haven School and continue the progress on the Thomas Nelson Middle School Project demonstrates your dedication to creating safe, modern, and inspiring learning environments to our students. We are grateful for the time, effort, and careful consideration that you have given to these important projects. Your willingness to hear and respect our community input while balancing the needs of the district ensures that our children will have the opportunities and resources that they deserve. Together, these projects will have a lasting positive impact on all students, families, and the wider community for the years to come. Again, thank you for your vision, your leadership, and your support of the New Haven School and the Thomas Nelson Middle School Project.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Kurt. I believe that says last.
Leadership is tough. Sometimes you don't get credit for where credit is due, but I wanted to just say, on behalf of everybody, thank you for leading and for your efforts. We just saw a wonderful demonstration of forward thinking. I want to follow up a little bit on what Sierra said. We have been not given proper information. I'm an international health forensic analyst. I've talked with Pfizer, CDC, World Health Organization, right in the early parts of the pandemic, scandemic. If you go to covid.gov right now, it was criminal. It's a criminal conspiracy. I presented that to CDC in 2020, and they rolled out a shot anyway against the analysts and against forensics science, showing that these vaccines are harmful. And so what you're getting with the flu shot is along the same lines. You'd be told the mRNA is safe, safer effective, it doesn't do any damage to DNA, but that doesn't match the science. The AMA and the American Academy of Pediatrics have now been named as special interest groups because of the funding they get. They are not in it for health, they're in it for money. If you look at the kickbacks and the fees, even what Blue Cross Blue Shield gives per shot, you will see that the doctors are incentivized to basically turn you into a income stream. So what Sierra said, I'm going to echo, because if anybody does not get fully informed consent, that means, it's not a, fully informed consent means you have a licensed health professional sitting down and verbally explaining all of the injury and death that may be associated with that unlicensed or unauthorized medical procedure, whether it's a device or an injection. And when that happens, if they are injured, you may be liable for criminal negligence. If they die, you may be liable for criminal homicide. And that's what we aren't being told. So in order to protect the people, you can be held liable in your personal individual capacity, which means you probably need to put up a $1 billion bond. $1 billion, because if you have 4,000 students times $10 million, you're already over the amount. And this is where leadership comes in. You have to tell these companies, no. It's not about misinformation, it's about you have to know what liability you're being set up for. And we're here to protect you because you're here to protect our kids and the future of this country. I did pass out to you, that's really what I'd like to, you can read this. That's the, the back part is, what happens when you don't fulfill the oath? We believe you will. We believe you're honorable men and women. We're here to support you. Help us to defend the kids. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Charles Michael.
Apologize for being so late today, but the thing about it is, is that the school was hard to find. But anyway, I'm here. One of the things that I'm concerned about the most is your all's oath of office. The oath of office you take on 228 is a contract with we the people. You're there to protect us. You're there to keep the transgressors, like the pharmaceutical companies and those that want to push these drugs out by order, to keep it from happening to we the people. And it is your duty to say no. It's not to say yes, because when you say yes, you're agreeing with them. And that's hard for me to swallow, because I elect my public officials and I give them a delegation of authority to do what will protect me, not protect the corporations, because that's what you're doing. You're supplying them with money to do more harm. If you have done or any research on the vaccines, they have not qualified any of the vaccines since 1986, when they were supposed to be doing damage control at that time. There's no reports. So you're all going to ask the children to stand in line, take this shot, and the people that's giving it to you telling you it's safe and it's good? Haven't even done their job. Why do you give them credit? Let them give you the money so that you get the stamps or you get the vaccines to pass out? I'm asking you to say no to this and send it down the road to protect your children. Because in your failure to protect the children, you have become just as complicit as they are in the liability, and you've accepted that liability. It's a liability that I don't want you to take. That's why I'm here to tell you about it. It's in the Constitution. The people have remedy, and that's what I'm also here to tell you, the people. There is remedy in our Constitution to stop what's going on. So I want, I'm asking you all to think through this clearly, to the point that I will say no to whatever they're asking, and push it aside and say, don't come back. The vaccines don't work. I know that Trump said what the other day, that it was Tidelino. It may be a combination, but they haven't put any information on the record to give us any confidence that they are correct. I see my time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Michael.
Thank you.
I think we're okay this time. We'll make sure we put it on here on the next one. Sorry about that, guys. Um...
I was questioning, we did not have people provide their addresses.
Yeah, it's fine.
Tim, what's your thoughts on that? Yes. Yeah, so technically, it does, it does read that they have to supply their address when they come in front of the board.
We've never enforced it, I guess, is what I'd say.
Yeah. Well, no, it does. Name and address. Yep.
We generally don't reply to guest comments. I will just acknowledge, as a matter of law, that we don't mandate vaccines. We just follow the state law. State law doesn't mandate it either. So just as a reference point, I think a little, somewhere a little over 90% of families choose to have the basic vaccines that are, that are part of, you know, childhood, and then beyond that, the flu shot is also a choice some parents make. But I do appreciate the comments, and I think, you know, there's obviously a lot of discussion about the efficacy and the impact of these things, and something we'll be working with our Director of Nursing to acknowledge and make sure we report back to the board on those details. But in terms of recognizing the role of the board in this process, you know, you have a Director of Nursing, our Director of Nursing is highly skilled and experienced healthcare leader who does have certain laws that she follows, just like all healthcare providers, and she does a great job. But I do appreciate the comments. It gives us a lot to continue to evaluate in our healthcare system as a school district, if we look at it through nursing.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. Moving on is the consent agenda. Everyone has received that in advance. Any questions regarding the items on the consent agenda, or any areas of discussion? All right. If not, we will need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. I need a second.
A second?
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Moving on to the grant application with Dr. Sheerhorn.
Good evening. Good evening. The grant season is upon us, so you'll see me a lot in the coming months. Today, we, I'm asking that if we can apply for three different grant opportunities. The first one being from the, and I don't know if I'll go in that order, but I will discuss all three. The first one being the AAUW Community Action Grant, which is a STEM-focused grant, and we would use that here at OKH to support the Fusion Program. And really, the intent of that grant is to provide rural schools more equity and access in STEM programming. So that's our first one. The second one that we intend to apply for is the CTE Innovation and Support Grant in the amount of $100,000. And that's... And that one is focused on creating a new and innovative approach to either a new career pathway, or it could also be an existing career pathway. So, we intend to apply for that one. And then the last one is the Read to Achieve. In previous year, we've applied for this one before. In previous years, it was called the Reading Diagnostic Grant, same grant, different name. But all of our elementary schools will be applying for this. Each school is applying for $70,000 to support Tier Two and Tier Three literacy interventions.
All right. Any areas of discussion around these grants?
Are these KDE grants?
The first one is not. The AAUW grant is not a KDE grant. It's just a grant that an organization is sponsoring to support STEM, and the other two are KDE grants.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we will need a motion to approve the grant application as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Sheerhorn, appreciate it. All right, moving on with Mr. Martin and Ms. Rogers, this will be the working budget.
All right. So, lots of budgeting conversations, obviously, throughout the year. It is an ongoing process that Ms. Rogers and I engage in, really with all of our schools, and ultimately, it's how do we utilizing our resources across the district? And how are we structuring those so that we can be as effective and as efficient as possible? This is just a reminder, as terms of like board conversations, we did have a draft budget conversation in January, and then a tentative in May, and then this would be the working budget here in September. They really would set the framework for this fiscal year and how we're utilizing those resources. To be clear, I'd say the, through those different stages, the framework of that budget remains really stable throughout the year. Obviously, at different junctures, there's things you don't know at that point in time, and as the year progresses, some of those things become clearer. For instance, in August, you guys were able to set the tax rate, property values had been finalized, prior to that, they were kind of a guesstimate from the state. Obviously, we set salary schedule, so, and at this point in the school year, we were able to really look at payroll. We facilitated a few payrolls at this juncture, and so now, really able to estimate what are our payrolls, and what that might be for the, for the whole year. Just a few things to highlight, really, in the general fund and through the grant process, based on raises facilitated, really estimating around a million to a million three in increased payroll from previous year. Talked about the tax rate. Also, looking at general fund, we had some discussions about that in August. We're estimating over $300,000 in additional general fund revenue that we'll have available. Things that we still don't know, money that comes from the state through the SEEK process is really not finalized until March or April, so really using estimates for those things in terms of state revenue. And then, obviously, tax collection and the rate in which those come in is also something that, that we don't necessarily know at this point in time. Continuing to look at operational expenses and how we can optimize those, that's, that's something we're looking at, trying to see. And really, we believe, based on, in order to facilitate this budget, a million dollars in operational spending would be what our target number is in reduction from last year to this year. And then we spoke about really rising fixed costs such as insurance and utilities. And then we also got a Title I increase this year from last year. So, just a few of the changes that have occurred from last year to this year, and then also differences between the tentative budgets that you guys approved, and then the working. So...
Mr. Martin, was, can you give us an idea of the amount of increase of Title I percentage-wise?
I'd have to connect with Ms. Sheerhorn, she's aware of those values. I'd say several hundred thousand dollars were...
I don't know about percentage-wise, but it was about 200,000.
Wow, significant.
So, this slide really just tried to provide a high-level overview of, when you look at the working budget, where, where is the money spent on different things? This child representation to the left just kinds of show you, what's the breakdown between payroll and operational spending? I'd say we continue to fluctuate in this 75%, 25% range, where 75% of our spending is on payroll items. But again, just a space for you to dive in to see what's spent in each of the different And then, these other slides really are just reminders, things that we've committed to, really as a district and also as a board, investment in people, and making sure that our people are compensated at a, at a very competitive rate. These were the salary raises we approved in April, along with different benefit packages, such as CEO rank change, and then all the benefits that we have for our staff that we've engaged in lately. And then, again, this is just a reminder, so these ranks, in terms of certified pay, I'm expecting these to get updated in December, so these are previous values from December of '24. And according to the board, and working with you guys, again, we're in a highly competitive area, and we want to rank well in terms of pay, so we are able to attract the right people and retain them. And these just show you where our rankings fell in December of '24, but I'll be sure to update those and show you where we fall here in a couple of months. So really, any questions on working budget?
I think we've all seen in the news in recent weeks of budgetary situations and financial concerns among districts, and I would like to commend our district leadership for having ongoing awareness and constantly and continually reviewing, as you say, optimize opportunities to save money. And at the same time, to continue to keep our people first, and are including both our students and the services they receive, and our teachers and staff, so that we can retain those individuals and attract good ones. Thank you for that.
Any additional conversations or discussion around the working budget? As Mr. Martin said, we sort of set the tentative budget, which sounds like it was pretty comparable to what the tentative budget was, not a lot of changes from the tentative to the working, other than truly knowing what the income, incoming funds were going to be, and then you guys set your budget from there.
You're able to solidify more values, instead of estimates that turn into more realistic numbers.
Right.
Yes.
There was some shifting of like funding too, but that's, that's really just technical stuff. It's still the same thing, just maybe it's coded 9400s and 9700s.
Right.
So, really nobody hears about that.
Just you. All right.
I appreciate that the updates are always succinct, and that they address what we need to know for decision-making.
All right, with that, if there's no further discussion, we will need a motion to approve the year 26 working budget as presented. You'll make a motion? All right, thank you. You have a second?
A second.
All right, thank you, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, guys. All right, we have Ms. Hogan, she's going to go over our thrive.
So, I've been sharing with you all over the last few months, some of the work that the HR team is doing related to making Nelson County Schools an employer of choice. And when we look at that priority, one of the ways that we gauge how we're doing in that is by looking at staff retention rates. And when we're speaking of retention, we're looking at how many employees remain in the district from year to year. We had a few dips in that, as you can see, but we had great growth in that this last year, and I just wanted to share those numbers and celebrate those numbers. Thank you. So, one of the things that we're doing related to that is looking at this framework for how we're making sure that employees are engaged in the district and happy to be working there. So when we think about uniting people, place, and purpose, we're also thinking about, what does it mean to work in Nelson County Schools, and what are the benefits of working in Nelson County Schools? And when I say benefits of Nelson, working in Nelson County Schools, I don't mean traditional benefits, I mean all of the benefits of working here. So, when we look at that, I'm not going to go through all the things that Alex just talked about, and what I've been talking with you all about over the last few months, but when we look at career growth and development, this is just a few of the things that you all know that you've approved for us to do for our staff. Also, looking at staff childcare and paid maternity leave, that's been a great addition. We've heard great feedback on staff childcare, and the maternity leave has been great as well. You're aware of these benefits that you approved as well, but one thing that I did want to point out is just because we wanted to come into a more common language about the vision for the district, we've integrated our pride values into the UP values. So you'll hear us talking a lot more about UP awards and UP games and that kind of thing, so I'll be providing you all more detail about that in the future. Do you all have any questions?
Yeah, that caught me a little bit. I mean, I know we had talked about the UP, and then I wanted to type in pride games the other day, and I was like, stop, it's not that anymore.
I catch myself doing that, too.
I think what's really important, I think goes back to something Karen shared with the finance team, is this, I really appreciate the amount of work that you've put in to going to the staff across the district and asking them, what's important to you to continue working here in Nelson County? And being able to present, you know, the high demands that they're looking for, from an employee, or from an employer standpoint, that allows us to make these decisions. We can sit here and make, and you know, vote and pass these along, but we're not boots on the ground like you guys are. You're there to ask the questions, and being able to present to us what they're looking for, for long-term employment, I think those numbers speak volumes to what you guys are able to do and advise us on as a board, so that, that we can provide the best working environment for the staff across the district. So I really appreciate the work that you guys put into it, because I know it's not easy.
Well, thank you, but we have a lot of staff that's been involved in that benefits teaming group, that was reaching out to employees and providing feedback as well. And then I'll recognize Mr. Bradley, Superintendent Bradley, he's been meeting with schools as well, having lunch with staff and talking to them about what it means to work in Nelson County Schools, and so that's been great as well.
Absolutely, I mean, Superintendent Bradley, and I see his portion up there with the career growth and development packages. I think anything that we can do that surrounds our, the staff of Nelson County, the teachers, the, the support staff, it's not just about vacation time or extra pay, it is about the entire person. And being able to do that, I think, is why we see the retention rate that you're seeing. And again, yes, I commend you guys for continuing to do that. And if you would show the retention rates, the prior slide, and I would like to note that I asked about these when they were shared with us, because this is the most accurate representation of the percentage of our staff who are returning. And sometimes there are other sources of information that are out there that are not as accurate, and it has to go with how that data is collected. So, just last month, in the Interim Joint Education Committee in Frankfurt, there was some discussion around a school report card, and how the numbers and rates reported there may not be accurate, because different, the way that they pull that information, and that data comes from various sources. So, I'm glad to see these numbers, because this tells us that the initiatives that we are doing and approving, and the efforts that are happening here are effective. To have 87% staff retention rate, that's high, because you also have retirements in there. You have people who legitimately move to another area geographically, so, or have another opportunity.
Yes, and thank you for pointing that out, because a lot of times, people look at the school report card, and they don't understand, if Kim Hogan works in five different schools in the district, and Kim Hogan leaves, she's counted on the school report card as leaving five times. And I think sometimes people look at those numbers and see this inflated turnover number and think, oh, wow, turnover's really bad. But until you dive in and understand the reports, it really doesn't come out to what it looks like on the school report.
And when they move school to school, that's also because they have, do they have to resign a position and then go into another building?
They do, but we don't count that in this number, because they're, we're retaining them inside the district.
But other reports do.
That's correct.
Same if someone moves to administration.
Yes, yes.
All right, well, perfect.
That's a good point, thank you.
I do just want to note for the public, we don't pay for staff childcare, in the full sense that it is a revenue-neutral program, so it's self-funded, it does save an employee about $200 a month, and we're still fine-tuning that every day, trying to figure out, you know, we have, our pay, I think, is probably quite a bit higher than some private childcare because of the way our structure is. We also have high-quality resources in there, but we're still doing that at a lower cost. And I just want to acknowledge that, we also don't pay for gym membership, just so you know.
Right, they're discounts.
Those are just discounts, that exists. We, we fight for the discount, so, I'm just, just so everyone knows. Would be nice, but that's, I share that just as some larger context for this work. From the staffing standpoint, the staff childcare has been probably the greatest response we've seen. People are very positive and engaged with that. Of course, maternity leave, depending on where you are in your life, is also, it's positive, and everyone, obviously, you know, we say competitive pay, we have increased pay over six years at 25% on average, which has just not kept up with inflation. As we all know, there is no keeping up with it. And there's just no way to, to do that. At the same time, we've been, we've pushed the envelope with all of this work as a, as a board over the last few years, pushed the envelope to put money back into the team members that are driving our district forward. So thank you guys for that.
Am I correct in saying it's also paternity leave?
Should say parental leave.
Parental leave, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have Facility Plan Next Steps with Mr. Martin.
All right, so, lots of facilities discussions coming up here. If you remember, in August, talked about a group of different projects. We kind of had some, some upcoming projects we wanted to discuss, and then also some projects that we've already completed, that the system that houses that, the KDE system's called FIC-PIC, we want to clean that system up to really bring those to closure inside that space. And that's what this first slide is. So, many of these projects, such as our athletic facilities, we also had a security project at Boston and Foster Heights that needs to bring closure to, and then the FMD space in Nelson County High is another example of just bringing it to closure in this space. So, really what I'm asking for here is approval of the BG4 and BG5s to close these processes out. So, to be clear, a BG4 is if a contract existed inside of that constructional project, a BG4 would bring that specific contract to closure, and then you would follow that with the BG5 to bring the whole entire project to closure. So, all these others already had all those contractual closures. The Thomas Nelson Athletic space needed a BG4 first, so we would approve that to bring that contract to close, and then next month, we would bring this back to approve the Thomas Nelson Athletic BG5. Cox's Creek is a different example in that space, that, that was a project that we had considered in terms of our prior DFP, we had a BG1, no construction has occurred inside that space, but we still need to bring that project to closure. Each of these would ensure, I worked with Ms. Rogers to make sure that the finances that we have accounted for, all these documents really account for that. And that's part of the process from KDE. So what we'd be asking for here is the current, the construction jobs that have been completed, we would approve the BG4s and BG5s as presented.
All right. Any questions or discussion? If not, we need a motion to approve the BG4 and BG5 KDE closeout process for completed projects.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right.
So now, the next few slides really talk about upcoming projects. We'll start off with, with the New Haven project. So really, the, the current state of this project is, is really, we're continuing, we're really about to set off the design phase. That process is really, I'd say, and it's a very rough draft, is kind of where it is at this point in time. The collaboration is really among Codell Construction, and also Pickett and Passifum, our architects that are on this job, along with New Haven staff, myself, our facility lead, Patrick Cundiff's also involved in that. And, and much of this is just identifying, what is the proper scope? And we've talked about that as a board, what's the proper scope for the project, and making sure that the facility really has what the students and the community needs. So currently, making sure that's getting identified. This is just a high-level overview of really what's possible. This is not necessarily anything that's a final design by any means, but conversations that have currently exist, or really thinking about the front and back drop-offs, we've talked about canopy... talked about canopy. We've also talked about fixing different fixtures inside the spaces, bathrooms, bringing those up to par, and then different inside spaces and making sure that we standardize those, along with some additional playground spaces, or the current discussions. So, this is just kind of where the project currently is. Really, our next step is gathering that team back together to, again, review this and make sure we have the scope right. And New Haven staff will be a part of that conversation. Based on previous conversations with the board and identifying, you know, what is a proper budget for this project, last month in August, we talked about $6 million, and Codell Construction was part of that conversation, and thinking about, again, what does the space need? There was an estimation process and thinking about the scope of some of these items. A member from Codell estimated each one of them and about how much that would cost. And based on that assessment, we feel like that'll fit well within the $6 million budget. And that's why we're bringing that to the conversation today. So, are there any questions on kind of the state of the project and next steps?
No, just confirming that this approval of a BG5 is just opening up to the design phase.
So, if we go back to the agenda, so, again, this is kind of a KD formality process. Our prior discussions with New Haven was really attached to the old DFP from 2021. Since we now have a new DFP, it was KD's recommendation, since that project really never occurred from a construction standpoint, to kind of end the old BG and then begin a new one based upon the scope that we've identified. So, firstly, we would approve the BG5 to close the prior BG, and then we would open a new one that aligns to our current vision.
All right. Any discussion on the New Haven BG5 and BG1? If not, we will need a motion to approve the BG5 and the BG1 as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So, now we'll have a similar process here with Nelson County High. And again, it'll be a, again, this project was attached to the old DFP, so we'd also have a BG5 closure that we will vote on, and then along with a new BG1, really moving us forward on our vision. Mr. Bradley's currently working closely with Studio Kramer, the architects on this project. And again, I think it's in a similar state as the New Haven one, in trying to identify scope. That design stage is really kicking off and thinking about, what could the project become? We do have a few images here to represent, and much of it, again, is just possibility. Nothing's really been solidified. It's, you could proceed in this direction or that direction, so.
So, I did want to introduce Kate Noble Ward tonight. She's on the front row here. She would be the, she's currently the lead architect of Studio Kramer, working alongside Stephen on the Nelson County High School project. And she's not been fully deployed, really, because you're not getting paid yet. So, she's, you know, she's been doing some tentative work. I think it's important to know, Phase 1 of Nelson County High School Campus, Nelson County Campus, this was the master plan drawing that shows the high school classrooms and new high school classrooms being two stories coming off the front and side connecting to the UP Center. I share that, because this is a massive project. It is upwards of 35 to 40 classrooms that would replace the 1969 wing that is, as you know, dated. And when it was designed, was not designed with humans in mind, probably in the same way that we would design them today, because we would have windows and other open spaces. But that was just the way it was in the 1969 design process. This assumes that there will be a Phase 2, Phase, and I think at this point in time, we're working from the assumption that we would combine Phase 2 and Phase 3 together as Phase 1 begins to develop through the design process, and we have more clarity. This is a year-long process. It would take, so in theory, this time next year, the design would be coming to, for approval in August, September area for movement. That means in 2026, the Nelson County High School campus, as the UP Center closes, it's opening up a new spot right next to it. I think there's, we're not really at a place to speculate on the specific spot. This shows you where the original drawing was, coming off the back. After going through the master planning process, they moved it to the front, because it was seen to be as a better use of resource, also better for the community, and a protected student commons in the back that allowed for a more outdoor use of space. So, these are some of the original drawings. These are not the current drawings, because the current drawings haven't really developed. So, we share this. This is on ncslpc.com, and it's just kind of identifying that Phase 1 for Nelson County High School. I think there is, in this case, it doesn't touch the gymnasium or the auditorium. Those would all be remodeled, or in theory, the auditorium in particular totally redesigned in Phase 2. So, this is just classrooms replacing the entire 1969 wing. So, I share that, just as a reminder of what Phase 1 entails. It is primarily focused on the academic inside space, while there would also be a massive outdoor space that would emerge between the UP Center and the high school. Any questions about that, Phase 1?
So, is the current BG1, or the new BG1 that we are proposing focused on Phase 1?
Only. Yes, the current BG1 is Phase 1 only.
All right. Any discussion?
This is only for Nelson County High School?
This Phase 1, this is BG1 for Nelson County High School. So, the current budget for this project is $40 million for the classroom wing.
And so, the BG1 would reflect that amount?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? If not, we need a motion to approve the BG5 and BG1s as presented.
I'll make the motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, so next up, we have Thomas Nelson High School, Middle School bids. So, on September 11th, we did have a public bid opening for Thomas Nelson Job. Codell Construction, Studio Kramer led that process. Really, throughout it, we had lots of questions from subs. I'd say the bidding process was definitely competitive. We had lots of bids that were submitted. I think all bid packages did receive multiple bids, with the exception of one. And really, that value, when we compare it to our prior bidding process, did kind of fall in line with what was expected in that package. But in general, the process was competitively bid. The recommended bids are here. Construction costs $28,200,000 roughly.
So, I just wanted to show just some context on what that is for. In 2021, the district purchased a 10.3-acre addition on the property at Thomas Nelson. This led to the design in 2021, 2022 of this wing, middle school wing and extended fieldhouse. It looks like this as an overview that leads towards Highway 245. These are just some renderings. It essentially matches the design of the current school, so it was designed in the same light of that. I share that, because these are all things that we have, you know, it's been some time since we looked at all the renderings. This is also on ncslpc.com with an overview of these pieces and parts. So, the bids on this project as a total, you can see the different bid packages, from earthwork to electrical, et cetera. You can see the total of those bids came in at $28 million, just over $28 million. And that is for the Thomas Nelson Middle School. Any questions about this?
Martin, what date did you say you opened the bids upon that? How did you?
It was September 11th.
September 11th, okay, thank you.
And so, I think we talked about this, but just, so, in terms of what was expected, the cost, and what it ended up being?
So, I think for, last time the project was bid, it was $24.6 million-ish, give or take. I think we had Stephen Ward on the spot, and he estimated roughly 10% addition. And really, that's him, I think, speaking from his own opinion. And it really came in right at that. I think it was about 12% difference from the original bid. So, really, fell in line with what we were expecting. Jim, I don't know if you want to speak to Codell. I think it feels like the bid package has definitely fallen in line with current market prices.
Absolutely. And to your point, yours truly, I also got put on the spot, I think, Ms. Bowling. So, it landed exactly where we thought it was going to. And to Mr. Martin's point, the bidder participation was really good. The electrical package, we're struggling. I think I told you all in the August meeting, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, we're seeing it state and regional. We're struggling to get bids. But to Mr. Martin's point, the one package, that electrical package, it came in pretty much where we thought it should. So, indicative of today's market, came in cost-wise, good group of contractors, the bidders that we're putting in front of you all tonight, all of them were the low bidders, with the exception of three. We went with the number two bidder, just the various technicalities. On two of them, one, one case, not so good of quality with the low bidder, so we went with the number two. So, feel good about the team that's in front of you. Everyone seems, you know, most, all of them, we've had past experience, good experience with, and feel good about getting the ball rolling and getting started if the board so desires.
I attended the bid opening, along with Mr. Gilliland, and I would like to commend those who did. We had excellent participation. I would estimate 30 to 40 community members were present. And as part of that process, we had multiple bids on each of the separate bid packages, meaning, you know, the different parts of the components of the project are bid out separately. So, it was good to see that there was no single bid without competition.
Right. And to your point, a couple of local contractors are in front of you today for approval. So, I think that's a good thing.
Timeline on this, we discussed if the bids are accepted, and you move forward tonight. The timeline is early November, first week of November start date. The end date is April, May of 2027. So, it's a 19-ish month project, and would be pretty visible for that entire 19-month period.
Any other discussion?
It's exciting times. This is some growth for Nelson County, and shows that the community's growing. Excited to see what this can do for our workforce and leadership in the future.
All right. If no further discussion, we will need a motion to approve the Thomas Nelson Middle School recommended bids and updated BG1 as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 3 to 2. Thank you, Mr. Codell. I know this isn't, was not an easy decision over the last few years, but as Mr. Gillian said, I'm excited for what this is going to do for our students. Everyone knows where I've stood in this conversation for a while, so to finally know that we're moving forward is a huge deal. And I know it's a big deal for the rest of our community, too. So, thank you, guys. All right, with that being said, we do have to move into the bond resolution. Do I need to read this out?
Tim, do we need to read the resolution, or can we just take the motion on the resolution?
Okay. All right, so, a motion will be needed to adopt a resolution authorizing the Nelson County School District Finance Corporation to issue revenue bonds for the purpose of construction related to Thomas Nelson Middle School construction project.
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 3 to 2. Thank you.
So, in order to act upon the bond resolution, the board does recess the regular board meeting and convene a district finance corporation meeting.
All right, so we will need a motion to recess the regular session of the Nelson County Board of Education and convene the district finance corporation meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. At this point, I don't think it matters, but aye, sure.
All right. Did you?
Yeah, aye.
Okay. Motion passes 3 to 2. Thank you.
Just as a matter of reference, you know, this is a separate public notice, so when we send out public notice, this was the notice that was sent out regarding that.
All right.
So, now the chair becomes the president of the...
And we are all present. So, we call this meeting of the Nelson County District of Finance Corporation to order on September 23rd, 2025. And just confirming, we set these back in April. Does anyone have any, there's no reason to discuss that. You all can see us standing in here. We're all here. And then we can go to the agenda, or the finance corporation. All right. Do I need to read this out? All right. Motion to approve the finance corporation resolution. As presented.
I'll make the motion as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, I just can't hear you, sorry.
I'm not saying, I also, sorry.
No worries. Motion passes 3 to 2. Recommended motion to adjourn this meeting of the Nelson County School District Finance Corporation. Thank you. Do I have a second? I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't think anybody would oppose leaving it. All right. So, with that being said, we are going to reconvene the regular session of the Nelson County School Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, and now we need to adjourn the regular session of the Nelson County Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, guys.